This is the January 23 meeting at Smoky Mountain Board. At this time, I'd like to call on Bill Nolan from Haywood County to lead some prayer. Bill?
Let us pray. O God, our liberation begins with the power of our Spirit, that we may live a fuller union with you, ourselves, our sisters and brothers, the small peoples. May our actions and decisions lead us to overcome fear, acquire knowledge, and be advocates for compassion and life-saving purpose. Let we go forward in our community with renewed sense of vision, hope, and new beginnings for the future. Amen.
Can you hear me better now? Is that okay?
That is a little better.
Has everyone had a chance to look at the agenda? If so, is there a motion to approve the agenda as presented? All in favor of the approval of the agenda, say aye. Okay, it's announced. Has anyone signed a public comment? Jerry? Katie Rodger, okay, Katie.
I'm Dr. Catherine Ryder. I'm here today, as often I come, to share stories about those families or people who are falling through the cracks of the mental health system. Today, I want to start with a business analogy. The Pareto Principle is also known as the 80/20 Rule, the Law of the Vital Few, and the Principle of Factor Sparsity. And it states that for many events, roughly 80% of the effects come from 20% of the causes. Some business consultant named it after this guy in Italy who discovered in 1906 that 80% of the land in Italy was owned by 20% of the people. He also discovered that 20% of his pea pods generated 80% of the peas. I personally have found this to be very truthful. And as Wikipedia says, the distribution appears in several different business situations. 80% of a profit comes from 20% of customers, or 80% of your complaints come from 20% of your customers, consumers, patients, whatever we deal with, what we're going to call them today. So, what's that got to do with my comments today? I'm an advocate for that 20%. That's because I'm the mother of a very high-need consumer on the innovations waiver who has a comorbid mental illness and is served by Smokey. One of the most interesting people in my life, all of the interesting people in my life, really, are part of that complicated 20%. I want to give you a few stories today. These three that are going to follow are all with partners. So, they're going to be yours, according to my newspaper, in just a few months. There's a single mother who has an adult daughter who receives 30 hours a week of in-home skill building and 30 hours of personal care. Mom has been approved by partners to work all of those 60 hours. This is working for this family. There's a couple with an adult son who gets 12 hours a day. That's what the waiver covers. They each can work 40 hours. However, he needs more than 12 hours a day, and he may end up moving regardless of the fact his parents can work with him. Here's the kicker. There's another family who has been blessed with three adult sons, and each of those three has been approved for 12 hours a day of service. Finding staff, and these people are in the Mount Airy part of partners, is difficult because they're challenging, they're big, and they need male workers. In the past, mom worked 84 hours a week between the three fellows. Partners now has denied any hours of employment, and the result is a lack of qualified inconsistent staff. The brothers are going to end up leaving their family home. This couple built a customized home for the three men, each with his own room and his own bathroom. The long-range plan was to turn the house into a group home. The brothers could then live together, which is really what they want. However, the funding stream to make that happen has changed, and that option for group homes is gone. This is going to be your problem all too soon when Partners and Smokey and the others all merge. Here's another family who, right now, is in Orange County but has family here with us and is thinking about moving. We probably hope she doesn't because she'll ruin our budget. She's a single, adopted parent of a 15-year-old daughter with severe mental illness and developmental disabilities, adopted from foster care, which is where I got all my kids, has a genetic disorder, has major mental health issues, and DD issues. Her concern is that the Medicaid reform that includes privatizing Medicaid is a problem because the business model focuses on profits. And this young lady is having trouble finding services. She's been at Central Regional Medical for five months now. She's spent weeks in the emergency room searching for care. It's already cost over $1 million. I'm sharing this with you because Mary Short and I talk pretty regularly about this whole Medicaid reform, and there was a meeting last week, there was public comments. It's recorded, the documents are on the web for review. I'm concerned because the National Health Law Program spoke about lawsuits that they filed against other managed care organizations in other states. What does that mean for us? I find it concerning that disability rights said that OHA has a right to support all Medicaid beneficiaries, but Alliance is trying to get cases dismissed from OHA on the grounds that provider appeals don't have that jurisdiction. What does that mean for people, parents, working with our children? I made a comment to one member of the committee that we need a plan for long-term services and supports for the ADD, kind of like the elderly. That wasn't evident either there. Mary and I agree it's odd that not one non-VC waiver Medicaid beneficiary showed up. No children, no pregnant women, no regular recipients. What does that say about our waiver? I need to conclude with a public thanks to Dr. Craig Martin, who was, after my November presentation, able to help the family I spoke about. I appreciate that. And that spruce pine youngster I've ventured ear about for a couple of months. For months of searching, he assaulted his mom, she wasn't hurt, and now he's in a PRTF, and the treatment team is hopeful. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Good to see you again. Hope you've had a great holiday. It's hard to fault Dr. Ryder, she's really good. I've known her for years. You know, it's great to have these advocates out here like this. It certainly makes your job easier, too, if you listen. And if you don't, we'll make it harder on you. See, I didn't hear nobody say nothing. But anyway, you know, the real-life stories. I really appreciate the testimony of the boy at the last meeting. If that didn't touch your heart, you must not need to be in this business. I certainly think that that's the kind of stories we need to share more often. I'd like to give you an experience that I've had since I've been here, and mine is real life. I've got 19 brothers and sisters, 125 grandchildren in my family, 25 great-grandchildren, 25 great-great-grandchildren. So, if you want an experience of life, I've got one to tell you about every turn you overlook. But since we was last here, I had a brother that went to the hospital with a stroke and 75 years old. And I'm going to give you the story because I think it entails what we're here at the table for. Whether you've got a long-term disability, short-term disability, you've got a disability. And you're just a second away from being in the seat of someone that you're representing today. We're very fortunate, and God has blessed us, that it's not us, it's someone else. But it could be us, just seconds from now. That's how close we are. So, we need to be very thankful, and I am. My oldest brother that had the stroke has been at Mission Hospital. The care he got there, I go back and think about what Rush Limbaugh said about the Obamacare, and that was about the death panel. How is medical people making decisions? That's scary. When you walk into a hospital, you've got five different doctors that's coming through. You've got 19 people that goes through, and you never know who is doing what, and the other don't know what they're doing. And when you end up, as my brother did, going out of the hospital when he needed to stay in there, ending up in a nursing home, which he'd never been there before, ending up in a nursing home, and it's been almost since the 17th of December, and just in the last two days, he's been able to do therapy. Now, if things are moving that fast in the physical health world that the governor is saying that we're going to, and these kinds of episodes is happening with people with physical illness, what do you think we're going to get when this is merged into behavioral health? This is scary when you stop and think about the pace that it's going. I found out at Mission Hospital, according to the doctors, anyway, that they're at 70% Medicaid. If they're at 70% Medicaid, what is that telling you about the statistics that Dr. Ryder is giving you? They're making decisions based on numbers, not on whether you need it or not. And I can tell you from personal experience, my brother didn't need to come out of that hospital. He needed to stay there, but he didn't get to. And I asked the administrator at the nursing home, I said, "How do you make your decision?" Well, paper. I look at the paper, and then I make my decision. I said, "Really?" I said, "Well, my brother didn't need to be here." I said, "You should put your eyes on a patient and make that decision whether you'd accept that person or not." Because three days after he was there at the nursing home, he ended up in the hospital again because I said he's not going to lay here and die over the weekend. So, these are real stories about my life and my experience, and I know the ends are concerning as well. But when you look at the people that we serve in mental health world, adults and children, if you think about how long this process has been going on since 2001, how many of these children that we called children at that time, how many are adults now and are ending up dying in the hospital, nursing home, other places? And they used to be a statistic in our system. So, we need to be thinking about the long-term care. That's where the money is spent, not the short term, the long term. So, we need to look at prevention. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the Consumer and Family Advisory Committee Report. Pat?
Thank you. First, I'd just like to say I really appreciate the board and being able to be at the table with some of the folks that are leading. I'm sorry to see you go if you're one of those folks. I really enjoyed the tax agreement. You're welcome. Our steering committee met for a course on December 9 since consolidation, which Brian Ingram spoke to us about the merger agreement and the Western Region partnership. Then our members continue to be involved on committees, cross-functional teams, provider council, state local CFA calls, as well as activities in the county and as well as some of the state committees. We have one CPAC member that now works on the DEWAC committee, and I've recently been on the stakeholder committee in Raleigh that's going to meet about six times. So, we continue to not only meet with our local groups, but we meet with various other groups, too. In January, which is this month, we're holding our regional meetings. The Central Region meeting was scheduled for the 14th. The Western Region meeting was January the 14th. The Northern Region was scheduled to meet the 21st but was canceled due to the weather and is rescheduled for the 28th. And the Southern Region is scheduled to meet the 27th. And then in February, all four regions will meet by video on the 18th. I also want to say I'm real thankful about our CPAC, that we're not fighting, that we appreciate the opportunity we have. I got some emails last week from a different area of the state saying, "What are y'all doing? How are y'all making it work?" You know, we're kind of looked at as probably the best CPAC in the state. You know, and one of the emails that said basically that and said, "We want to know what y'all are doing. We want to..." And it was an "us against them" type email as our CPAC against management. For one thing, we try to work as a team, and we try to value each other. So, you know, we're so grateful that we've got the CPAC that we've got. And for the most part, we all respect each other, the board respects us, we respect the board, we respect the staff, the staff treats us with respect. And I just want to say thank you for that because it was just mind-blowing what I was bringing and from this other CPAC, some of these folks from a different part of the state. And I just finally said, you know, "This is our liaison, contact him in the future." You know, because others are kind of our meetings, and we're just kind of their meetings. And Lord knows I have nothing to go to already, but, you know. I was going to say, you know, we're really lucky. I think sometimes we realize how fortunate we've been, that we all try to come together and work together, but in some places, that don't happen quite like it happens for us and so on. I'm really grateful, and I'm thankful for us CPAC here, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Under the Board of Directors items, a couple items to mention tonight before we have a closed session here in a few minutes. One, later tonight, we'll have our special read admission, and we don't expect our meeting to run normal length tonight, it should be a little shorter, so just want to point that out. For the newly reconstituted board, we're going to have a retreat on February 21st and 22nd at the Doubletree. And so, you'll be contacted more about that, so I just wanted to mention that tonight. The executive committee met earlier this afternoon, met at 1:00, and we'll discuss a number of items, and we'll discuss some of those before a closed session. I don't think there's any other items that we need to review prior to pulling into a closed session. So, we need to have a closed session pursuant to subsections 143, 318, 11, 3, and 6 of the general statutes of North Carolina to consult with the attorneys in order to preserve the attorney of client privilege. And is there someone in the members making motions? Mary Cox made the motion, Sarah Second. Michael Laverne, Second. All in favor of one in closed session, say aye. All right. Bill, in order to get the business part of the meeting done right now, Rick said I only have three minutes to talk, so I know you're terribly disappointed by that, but try to conceal it. We've got a great celebration planned for later, and we want to really dedicate our time towards that. I think we neglected to include something on the agenda here, and we can stick it in if you wouldn't mind, and we need an amendment to change the agenda. Okay. You may recall, this is to conclude, pretty much, the activities around the consolidation of Western Highlands. And you remember the long, winding trail we got on here with some, I suppose, miscommunication in DHHS around what was done and what was needed to be done, and a couple of amendments. One story short, Tracy worked with general counsel at DHHS to come up with another amendment that we received, and in fact, the secretary, we really tried to make this efficient as possible, we got a letter from her approving the dissolution in the merger, essentially contingent upon the execution of this amendment, or the adoption of the amendment by both boards. And we had a conference call, I forget, before Christmas or after? Yeah, before? January 7, that's when I thought it was, January 7. And unanimously approved that, and this morning, and where's Chuck?
I'm here.
Why don't you tell us a little bit about the action the Western Board took this morning with that?
I'd be glad to. We met some persons on my conference call this morning to go ahead and take a look at the amendment to the consolidation agreement with Smoky Mountain. And after conversation, going closed session today to have a conversation, as we come out of closed session, the motion made, seconded, and carried unanimous by the board to sign that amendment. So, as of today, or as of this morning, I guess, about 11:55, somewhere in that timeframe there, based off the letter from Secretary Paul State on the 19th of December, the dissolution of Western Highlands was complete today, and we signed the merger agreement.
So, we've officially entered a new era here. You know, I don't know who we should clap for, what we should do, but man, this is, you know, nobody's done this. You know, nobody's done this under waiver. Remarkable effort, you know, cooperation, hard work. I guess it really just shows you what you can do. Very proud, I know the staff is, the Western Board, the Western staff, you know, in not ideal circumstances, of course. You know, people really came through, and we continue to be complimented on how smoothly that went. And that's not a compliment to me, that's a compliment to all of us, and really, I just could not be more proud or thankful for all the work that people did to conclude this. So, I suppose we're clapping for everybody, right? We just keep it on our toes, Jerry. Okay. Okay. Regionalization of MCOs. We have a, and what we're going to do to really simplify this now is on our website, we have a section on there that's regionalization update, and I think it's under our news and update section, and news and announcements, and we have each of the monthly updates there, and that's live now. You know, the best thing we can do is to just keep providing information for folks about that. I guess folks know that there's a board committee now, ad hoc committee, Rick, Mandy, and Ronnie, that will be the liaison group that will meet with members, three board members from each of those other MCOs. And we're having our first virtual meeting, and I think we're doing it over video on the 29th next week. So, that'll be in that phase. We have a draft letter in the tent that we'll be looking at, and I think, you know, each of the boards, this is our first chance, we had that icebreaker at Pinehurst, was really just kind of get to know each other a little bit. You know, those boards will be defining their role in this process, and of course, will be the liaison back to this board. And I don't know if there's anything more you want to say about that, Rick, or... Okay. I'm using up my three minutes fast here. Smokey and Western Highland Rate Negotiations. And this is just a quick update. This is something we've been working on for two or three months, and there are really two aspects to this. One has to do with the opportunities that the state has and takes to change our rates. And typically, that's done on an annual basis as part of an actuarial study that's based on adjustments in utilization and budget. In addition, the state has the ability to, at some point during the year, come in and say, "Well, there's been this change," programmatically, let's say, they're considered program changes, "and this affects your rate." And we asked some questions of the state about their choice to do that at some time versus not others, contracts that we are required to abide by that have rates associated with them. All of this is so new for everyone, it's a lot of unexplored territory, and I think there's a certain amount of uncertainty, you know, as everybody's kind of learned this new system. We also, in a manner related, asked a lot of questions about our experience in this consolidation with Western Highlands, and quite frankly, the expense associated with that. And we, you know, have come to think about that in three categories. There was the transition, there was the startup, and of course, the closeout. And we've spoken about that quite a bit. There's a big price tag on all of that. And given that this is a result of an action by the state to terminate and then assign a contract, you know, our feeling was that there could be some shared responsibility for that expense with us. Again, because, you know, this had never happened before. Our contract with the state doesn't have a provision that really stipulates how those expenses can be dealt with other than by us eating it. So, you know, we had a series of conversations around that. Very good meeting this last week. It looks like we're going to come to agreement. Lisa has a little bit of homework, more to do with folks there that would allow us to recover the vast majority of those expenses over a period of time. And really, now, it's a matter of kind of amortizing or depreciating a lot of those expenses in a way that would be appropriate. So, that's a great, you know, very, very pleased with that. Again, I'm not sure, I'm not sure anyone else has done that one either. It's not typically something a lot of folks talk about, but, you know, I think it's fair to say that, you know, we made a good case, and it was well-received, and hats off to Lisa and folks for the way they handled that. Advantage point, one of our favorite parts of the agenda here. Christina, do you want to introduce this month's presentation, if that's a fair term of use?
Thanks, Brian. So, this month, we know one of our very favorite things, I think all of us have enjoyed, is hearing a story from someone that lives and breathes some challenges in their life. And this month, we have the privilege of having Cheryl Mason, if you'll come up. And Cheryl happens to be a staff member for Smoky Mountain Center, and she'll take you to who she is, but she's really here tonight as a parent and a family member who has quite a story. And I want to say that recently, at a staff meeting, Brian and I and several folks were over in Haywood County, and I was reminding staff that we do this every month at the board meeting, and, you know, and we don't want you to think it's all about our staffs. I know last month, Richie, the guy, you heard a story from, come. But we really just wanted to make sure staff know, and that either staff and/or other consumers and families in the system who are having challenges, we would love for them to have an opportunity to come and tell their story. So, Cheryl, we are most grateful for you to volunteer to come over tonight and share with us a little bit about you and your son. So, I'll turn it over to you.
Would you like to come up here? Make sure everyone can hear you, or would that be too...
Okay.
I can hear you just fine.
I'm little, but I do have a big voice.
My name is Cheryl Mason, and I'm an employee at Smoky Mountain Center. I'm the application analyst for Alpha MCS. I'm here to tell my story about my son, Ron, who was, I moved here in 2011, February 2011, and left him in the state of Florida to finish college. He was six classes from his ethnobotany degree. And on July 2 of 2011, I received a phone call from the emergency room that my son had been a passenger in an automobile that was involved in a motor vehicle accident. My son, before his accident, was traveling the United States feeding the homeless people.
Talk a little louder. Things became bigger even.
Before my son was in his automobile accident, he traveled the United States and fed the homeless people, and he was very into other people's needs and helping wherever he could help. After his accident, he was released from the ER after doing a chest X-ray. Within 30... Within 30 days of his accident, he started having seizures, three to five a day, he became highly depressed, he could not finish school because he could not read or write, he also could not do things on a daily basis, like remember to brush his teeth, or take a shower, or even eat. It got to the point where Robert was very suicidal, when he started cutting himself. So, I went to my supervisor, Robert Webb, and told him what was happening, he suggested for me to call the access line at Smoky Mountain Center. So, I picked up the phone, and I called the access line, and within 20 minutes, my son had state services, and I was able to go to the state of Florida and bring him back to the state of North Carolina, and walk into Appalachian Community Services. Services were started immediately with Dr. Betty Albacoa and Jamie Currie. Today, I wanted to let everybody know that because of Smoky Mountain Center and Appalachian Community Services, my son is now only having three to five seizures a week, he is no longer depressed, he is not suicidal, and he's able to work, to live independently and do things on a daily basis. So, I just want people to know that Smoky is a wonderful place to work, and the staff at Smoky Mountain Center have been a very good support system for my son and myself, and I consider them family.
I think we're up to the finance committee report.
Thank you, Brian. Doc Crawford, can you hear me?
It wasn't me that time, it was me and two people, right here, Bobby, let's speak up.
Just wanna make sure, I just wanna give enough of Smoky's financial position at the end of November, at the end of November, we had 48 million in cash, which equates to about two months of service expense, our Medicaid risk reserve had grown to a little over 4 million, and as a reminder, we're required to have a risk reserve to protect us from any cost overruns against Medicaid. Our total assets at the end of November were 63 million, also, at the end of November, we had $28.7 million in liabilities. Of those liabilities, over 16 million were claims that were estimated, or services estimated to be provided, for which we had not yet received a claim. Our unassigned fund balance, which we would like to be at a minimum of 8%, is currently at 4%, and that equates to $12.6 million, but it's 4% currently. For our revenues and expenses, we have year-to-date 67.8 million in Medicaid service revenue, and we've utilized 93% of the service dollars through November. Our overall Medicaid surplus is at 9%, and for all of our funding sources, which would include Medicaid, county, and state and federal dollars, we're using 92% through the end of November. Our overall surplus is at 10%. Also, tonight, finance committee approved some budget amendments, it was an increase to the budget of 156,000, our budget is a little over 305 million, we had some additional state allocations to serve consumers that are transitioning to the community through the Department of Justice Settlement, or the Transitions to Community Living Initiative, we received some funding to support consumers with traumatic brain injury, we also received some funding for a homeless program here in Asheville, and offsetting that increase was a significant straight reduction of close to $400,000. So, again, our budget remains at 305 million dollars. Also, in your packet, there are a lot of financial reports and dashboards, anytime you have any questions about them, just catch me before or after the meeting, and I'll be glad to explain any of the information. Thank you.
I got a big voice, I think they can probably hear me. As I told the finance committee tonight, this was our last meeting of the finance committee and its current members, and I've been working with all of these people over the last several years, last few years, I know Rick has been our chairman, and we appreciate very much when you come in here and ask for approval of the actions that we've taken in the finance committee. Tonight, we did approve the finance reports, as well as the budget amendments reports, and it was approved in the finance committee as everyone voting, everyone was approved. I would welcome a motion from the floor that you approve the actions of your finance committee this morning, this afternoon.
Okay, Michael Albert made the motion, and Larry Cox seconded the motion. Any questions? All in favor of the motion, say aye. Okay, Patience Anderson, thank you, Ed. Next item we have on the agenda is the consent agenda, there are a number of items, one item that was pointed out to me that needs to be changed, on the December 19, 2013 Board of Directors' minutes, it left out Joyce Edwards, and she was here at the meeting, don't want Joyce Phil left out, so, are there any questions about the consent agenda? Hearing none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Say it.
Billy Kennedy made a motion to approve, Ronnie Field seconded. Any questions? All in favor, say aye. It's unanimous. Okay, the next item that we have is the presentation, presentation to board members, and this is for outgoing board members, and I think there's nine outgoing board members that are actually here tonight, we have plaques for you, we'd like to say a few words, give you a chance to make, to say something if you would, there are actually 21 members of this board right now that are, that'll be going off the board, and we'd like to recognize everyone at this time, Jerry, you wanna move, so we can get some pictures?
Certainly, you know, we don't, we, we're, you know, I look forward to offering some comments, and I know Rick Phil, and, you know, Jay, you've been around a while, Ronnie, you know, some of, anybody who'd like to, you know, offer some, some good stories, you know, now's your chance. You know, this is bittersweet, no doubt about that, it's, on the one hand, we want to make as much of a celebration of the great work that people have done, their commitment and dedication, and it's also saying goodbye to folks, and that's not easy, you know, the board wrestled with this whole governance issue for months, and now, you know, here we are. So, just look forward to having people chime in with any kind of embarrassing or other stories they'd like to make about Phil, tell that. Hey, new Ronnie, here we go, kinda new Ronnie, come on, up here, join us, for crying out loud.
And if you would, if you'd move up a little bit closer, so we can make sure everybody can see and hear, and I've got these in order for my assignment.
Can add you too, you, you know, ex-board chair.
The first person we want to recognize tonight is Helen Alverson, Helen, would you come forward, please? Helen, and Michael, and Daryl, and Joyce, and I don't know if there's anyone else here that were on the Foothills Board, we all served on the Foothills Board, had some interesting meetings, and Helen was head nurse at Broughton for a number of years, and I've always enjoyed Helen's time with us, she brings so much insight, and we really are gonna miss Helen, and Helen, on behalf of the Smoky Mountain Center, here's a plaque that reads, "In deep appreciation for your individual talents and concern, dedication so generously given to the citizens of our communities, Board of Directors, Smoky Mountain Center, January 2014." Thank you.
All I got to say is, after you retired, that state hospital system just went to hell in a minute.
Stay up here, we'll say a few words, yeah.
Well, I was looking over some paperwork that I was going through today, and I have a letter from the 16th of January 2004, appointing me to the Foothills Board, so, this month is 10 years, and it's certainly been my honor to serve, I hope that some of the decisions that we've made over the years have helped our consumers and families, and I made a lot of great friends on the board, we've got a superb group of folks, we had a great group with Foothills, I think suffice it to say, we've been through a lot with Foothills, and then, and coming with Smoky, and we were so proud to come with Smoky, but I just want to say thank you all so very much for all of your support, and I'm gonna miss you, so if you're ever coming, good Marion, stop in. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I'd like to say a few words, as you know, Helen is from Mike County, unless my memory's serving me wrong, I was the one that asked Helen to serve on our board, I came on a couple of years before Helen, when we were with Foothills, and, you know, as I began to think about who might be good to serve on our Foothills Board, Helen's name came up, and, you know, her work with Broughton Hospital, and the patients there, and then I think Helen won't mind me saying, she has a family member who's a consumer, and her strong advocacy for her sister has been a true asset to this board, as well as Foothills when she was there, and I'm gonna truly miss her, of course, I live in the same county, and we can still talk, and Helen's been good to call me back and forth, and, you know, pass messages along and so forth, but I'm gonna truly miss her advice, she's sometimes quiet, but she's always got good things to say, and will say it at the right time, I'll never forget, though, the ride home after the meeting from Caldwell, won't say much about it, but for those of you who were with us that night in Caldwell, you know what I'm talking about, and we'll, we'll leave it at that.
I think that's all the previous directors.
That's exactly right, but again, thank you Helen for your service, and we'll call on you from time to time for some good advice, thank you.
I'd just like to say thank you to Michael for giving me the opportunity, and he's always been very supportive, and when I would hear a rumor, I'd try to track things down, and so I always called Michael to see if he knew what was going on, and so, I've had a lot of great cooperation from so many people, and I really appreciate the opportunity to serve, thank you.
Will Glenn Johnson come forward, please? We would like to recognize Glenn, and for many of you that know Glenn, and he attends our meetings, he's very regular in his attendance, Glenn is a commissioner in Avery County, and always speaks with a commissioner's heart, always very concerned about our finances, and has a real passion for this, and we want to thank you for your service, and on behalf of Smoky Mountain, we have a plaque for you, Glenn, recognizing you for your service, Brian, you wanna read the plaque?
I would be happy to. Presented to Glenn Johnson, "In deep appreciation for your individual talents and concern, dedication so generously given to the citizens of our communities, Board of Directors, Smoky Mountain Center, January 2014." Glenn, thanks. I can't, I can't see Glenn without thinking about, of course, New River, right?
Right.
We, we were in...
It was quite a ride, boy.
We were in some foxholes with that, weren't we?
We were. Well, this is, this has certainly been a learning process, I know, you know, the new reconstituted board is not, it's not all bad, I don't think, I think the state's attempt to, to put more qualified, knowledgeable people in mental health, I know when I came on this board a little over five years ago, I knew absolutely nothing about Smoky Mountain, I knew absolutely nothing about mental health, I'm not sure I know a whole lot now, but, but I do, I do know somewhat more than I once did, but, and then, and then when the county commissioner boards, when, after elections, they do, they do turn over, and I think, you know, it's not all a bad thing to put more qualified people, knowledgeable people in the mental health field, onto the, onto this board, but, you know, who knows, I understand that, you know, we'll be doing some rotation down the road, so maybe we'll be, some of us will be seeing each other again, but I've enjoyed meeting each and every one of you, except probably Bill, oh, no, 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 but, thank you.
Long line.
Dennis and I share at least one of the same friends over in Macon County, so, he knows very much about Mr. Dennis Conley over there, and I know quite a bit about him too, so, I like the kids, Ronnie, but it's been a pleasure knowing each and one, each and every one of you, thank you.
Don't change your phone number now.
The next member I'd like to recognize, and this is a tough one, Dana Jones, if you'll come forward, please? I know a lot of people want to speak to you, I don't know what that means, Dana, I, I remember when I first came on the board here, Dana was so friendly, he was commissioner in Cherokee County, he was on the executive committee, I think he was on every committee the, the board had, always looked to his guidance and wisdom, and we're really gonna miss you, and we appreciate you very much, more than you know. And Brian has something he wants to present to you at this time.
It's gonna sound similar to Glenn's, but...
Well...
Presented to Dana Jones, "In deep appreciation for your individual talents and concern, dedication so generously given to the citizens of our communities." Thank you. Let me go first here, and then, there's a long line here, I think before, I remember I came up to Smoky, probably to get some paperwork or something, and it was actually before I started, and there was a meeting with the Evergreen Foundation that same day, so I remember I did a bunch of stuff, and they said, "Oh yeah, you gotta come down here and meet with the..." And it was a whole bunch of board members from Smoky, meeting with the board members of Evergreen, remember that?
Remember.
So, I got started with you before I was even a regular employee, and you're a great advocate for Western North Carolina, mister, no doubt about that.
Dana, my two years as chair here, you were on various committees while I was chair, because I always looked at you when I was looking for committee members or committee chairs, you were just, you were available, you were knowledgeable, and you were willing to work. Brian mentioned the Evergreen Foundation, when we, Brian mentioned it over there, when we started that work, when we started our negotiating and talking, you were such an advocate for Western North Carolina, you really were, you were, you're a champion for that part of our, our great state, and they are so fortunate to have had you over there as a county commissioner, and have you as a resident even right now, and I have really enjoyed serving on this board with you, man, I mean that sincerely. It's my hero, but he had dinner with Jerry Plauer one night. My good friend Dana Jones and I started this track together, going on nine years ago, coming to this board, and he, like me, didn't know very much about it, we know we had problems in our counties, and sometimes I may have went about it wrong, to get, to try to help with the service, and what Glenn said about having more expertise on the board, that's great, but it never replaces the heart you have for people, ever. Dana Jones has that heart for the people, Dana Jones is no longer a commissioner, but I guarantee you, he gets more calls in Cherokee County than any commissioner, I just really believe that. So, he's not only my friend, he's been my confidant in a lot of things, and people will never know what he's contributed to this board, you just don't know, but I do, and I appreciate it, and I love him, so, I hate to see him go, but we'll come back around. Of course, this governance issue, I was one of the ones that spoke to it live, I didn't want to speak against it in the morning at 9 o'clock in Rock. So, he's still... So it still goes on. It's, you know, five years, are they gonna know me? I don't think so. So, we'll speak against it again in the morning. So as the governance issues continue to, because you lose people like Dana Johnson and Glenn, and people who have heart for their community. You can't replace that with anything. But I just want to tell Dana Jones in front of these folks that I love him and appreciate him, and I thank him for being not only a supporter of mine, but supporter of the far west, and supporter of all of y'all, and supporter of the employees of this organization. This man has been there and done that. So we're losing a very valuable board member, but someone who will stay involved. Hello.
I don't want to drag this out all night, Dana, but I wanted to say a couple of words. I don't know if you remember that first meeting that the Foothills folks came to. Tom McDevitt, we came in, unfortunately, been sold a bill of goods, and that was kind of a contentious meeting. I hate that it started off that way, but I've come to know a different Dana, and it's been great to know you. I've come to have a lot of respect for you. I'm gonna miss you.
Thank you.
Been really good, and I hate, hate we're gonna lose you.
Thank you. My wife and I, my wife at the time, and I first got to know mental health when we were having some problems, and there was a, she was having substance abuse problems, which later broke a marriage up, and we went to a facility there in Marlboro, North Carolina, and Dr. Peter Cook was there and counseled with us and so forth. And I've seen a lot of changes since that time with mental health. I don't think they're all good. I feel like to keep things on a local level is better. I do understand why the state's doing this. I'm not gonna cry over losing my appointment on this board because it's my time. It's getting harder and harder to get out here. I have a lot of family obligations and church obligations and club obligations, and I work with the FCA and different organizations like that. So, I've got plenty to keep me busy. I hate that we're gonna not have any representation from the three counties. I do understand why the state wants to restructure. They're putting knowledgeable people on, and hopefully we can get over that threshold in population and get more representation from the counties that are gonna like it. I've seen a lot of transitions. We're gonna be, we're on film tonight, so I'm not gonna say a lot about the bad and the good. I mean, I'd like, there's a lot of things I'd like to say about Evergreen, there's a lot of things I'd like to say about the past administration. I can tell you this, that Brian is a credit to this organization from what we had in the past. I think this is a good board. I think by hearing what people have to say around the table, that we're all interested in mental health. Sometimes we have a bureaucracy there that we can't hardly get over, but we just have to keep struggling and going on. But I've got a lot of friends here, and I appreciate it. Ronnie Bill and I are two men that can stand up and say we love each other, and still go home and sleep with their wives at night. But I do love Ronnie. But Ronnie and I got to know each other years ago because he was my landlord when I had an appraisal office over in Macon County. But I appreciate everybody, and thank you so much. And I'm still on, still on one of the boards here, so I'll be coming back and forth, and I hope all of you stay safe, and Godspeed.
I'd just like to say to everybody that's leaving the board, appreciate you. We're gonna miss you because it's, you get to know everybody, it's like family. And when New River first came and merged with Smokey, the northern counties were told there was three main troublemakers. They were Ronnie Bill, Dana Jones, and Mary Ann Inlow. And Mary Ann's not on here on this board anymore, but it didn't take us long to figure out who the troublemaker was. And so at first, we did have some rather contentious meetings. And then after the northern region got the feel of what the board was doing, and what the director was doing, we had a change of heart. And the people in the, I think we'll call it western group now, the western counties, they all had a true feeling for mental health. And I think all the three districts, including western Highlands now, the people on this board, you really have a feeling for mental health and what we need. And it does take the heart to be, to be in it. You've got to have the heart for it. Thank you. Thank you, Dana.
The next member we'd like to recognize is Billy Kennedy from Watauga County. Billy hasn't been with us a great deal of time, but he's a commissioner in Watauga County, and enjoyed serving with me very much.
Billy, are you surprised to learn your plaque says the same thing as yours?
Yes. Do you want to read it?
You're in great company now. Now what more can you say? His last name's Kennedy, and he's a Democrat. So you got some things.
Everything in due time.
Everything in due time. It's been great to get to know you. You're a good thinker. I think you're a solid man. I know you probably got your nose bloody a couple of times for us up there in Boone, and I appreciate you kind of sticking up for what you think is right and caring for people. I think that's really at the core of it, you know what's right, and that's what this is all about. So, appreciate you very much.
Well, thank you, Brian. I really appreciate being able to serve. Sorry it's been just a year that I've got to serve with y'all. I was enjoying getting to know y'all. I know you all have your hearts in the right place. To me, what's important is how we treat and how we interact with the other people around us in our lives. And that means everybody. And on the mental health front, everybody in this room is on the front line in one way or the other. And so many people don't know what's going on, and so I hope to be able to share that. And a lot of people, everybody knows that mental health is gonna affect all of us one way or the other in our lives, and the more we take care of it, and the better it'll be. And I just want to make sure that as far as the restructuring, that we get people that, I'm all for experts on it, we need the human touch too, so that we don't just become a corporate entity rather than a public entity, which is really feeding from the people who make it up rather than people who succeeded in it. So, thank you all so much, and I hope our paths cross again in the future.
The next member we'd like to recognize at this time is Steve Lillard from Jackson County. Steve? Steve's been a great member, and we really appreciate him serving on the board. Steve serves on the finance committee, and I know you have a law enforcement background, and we really appreciate your service on the board. And Brian, believe it or not, has a plaque that reads similar to a few of the other ones, but...
So you're in great company, because everybody else reads the same. I think I appreciate about Steve, he never let us break any laws all the time you were here. I really appreciate that, and you checked your firearm apparently at the door, so, you know, just, again, just a solid man, cares about his community, and, you know, even though you're not on the board, you can carry our flag for us, all right? Okay.
It was about two thousand and five when I joined this group, and I see just a very few faces that were here then. It has been a long journey since we had just the seven small counties out in the west. Lisa and I were talking just a few minutes between the meetings, and I think my first board meeting, we had just did a large reduction in force due to the new reform that was going on. And I think our budget then was under twenty million dollars. And then we were looking at the numbers in the finance committee today, and looking at it, it was at three hundred and five million dollars. We've come a long way, and it certainly is, certainly shows the effort that the members of this board have put forward, and the staff, the hard work that the staff has done to make those accomplishments. I am honored to have been a part of this organization, met a lot of great people along the way, board members, staff, friends, consumers, you know, you just can't get this anyplace else. And I will miss you all, but I'll still be around there in Jackson County, and please, you're always welcome there, please come see us. Thank you.
Has anybody here ever, besides until just now, heard Steve, and never said a word? Very seldom, but I have. Those of us who know Steve has. This is a gentleman who sees mental health on the front line way before anything comes to this board. He's dealt with it for years. He's a loyal member of this board. He's a great representative of not only Jackson County, but of this board in his travels. He has more knowledge than you can ever imagine when it comes to the statistics and how you handle mental health cases. Steve Reed is also sharp with the financials of this, as Lisa can tell you. He will be very much missed. He'll be very much missed as part of this board for a lot of reasons, but I'll still call him if there's some questions. So, Steve, we, I appreciate alone with a lot of other folks. Steve never says much, unlike some of us. And, but I guarantee you, if you don't know what goes on, this gentleman will know, and Steve will miss you a lot. Steve, I come on here in, that part of two thousand and seven. I think you said you were on here in two thousand and five, when it was just the seven counties. I gotta remember one, I do remember one specific thing. When I come on this board, the northern, the northern group joined with the Smokey western group right here, you were the friendliest guy I'd ever met in my life. And I got to know you pretty good at that point, and always at every meeting, Steve would come up and spend a little bit of time talking. Now, he did talk to me. I'm sorry he didn't talk with you, but Steve did talk to me. And we went to Pinehurst once or twice, I know of, to some meetings down there, and he was always, as Ronnie said, very, very effective on our finance committee. He knew what he was talking about, he knew the right questions to ask, he knew what the answers were supposed to be. And I want to call him my friend for the rest of my life. Thank you much, so much for being here, buddy.
The next member we'd like to recognize tonight is C.B. McKinnon. Is C.B.? You step forward, please. C.B., I apologize, Ronnie Bill wants to say something, so I'm not sure exactly what he's gonna say, so...
But it'd be long. It'll be long, whatever, come on. It could be dangerous.
C.B. is a new county commissioner from, he's been there for two years in Cherokee County. During that two-year period, not only has he served dealing with this board, but to Region A. We've been in Cherokee, you'll find that C.B.'s always prepared, he's always concerned not only for his county, but what's going on in the region. He's one of those that knows what goes on in the region. As a lot of us know, in the far west at least, we better know what's going on in the region where it comes to DOT and a lot of things. A lot of y'all have not got to go, C.B. But when you get to know him, you'll find out that he's, he always wants to learn. And I assure you, he knows more about mental health than he ever wanted to in the years than while he's been here. So, C.B., it's a pleasure to call you my friend, and we appreciate, you know, what you do for this board, what you do for the region, and the support you give where we live. I appreciate it. I appreciate the time I have served on this board. It's probably the, I'm setting a record for the shortest board appointment. I do appreciate that. One thing that has encouraged me is we had some concerns come up from some folks that came in. Dr. Martin, it's nice to hear that those were addressed. That's encouraging. And not only did he follow up with that, he followed up with me when I asked those questions. He got with me, some conversations, and so that's encouraging. One thing, one of the best things about this shorter appointment is serving with a celebrity like Ronnie Bill. I appreciate that. I do want to take the time to thank Dana Jones. Dana Jones has served this board for a lot of years. I think we were talking since ninety-eight. And I just want to publicly thank him for serving as a representative of Cherokee County. I really do, and I appreciate the time I've spent with him.
Thank you. Appreciate you. Thanks very much.
The next board member we'd like to recognize is Tommy McClure from Ash County. Tommy here? Okay, sorry. The next person then we'd like to recognize is Bill Nolan from Haywood County. Bill, if you'll step forward?
I can't be asked.
Okay. Bill, I have enjoyed serving you very much, more than you know. I have a lot of respect for you. I know you're a former chair, and also served on the, and served on the Haywood Board, and we certainly appreciate you doing the prayer every meeting. You're a gentleman, and we really appreciate you being here and being with us, and I've enjoyed serving with you.
Well, Bill, you're pretty much an institution here at Smokey, a good one at that. And, you know, again, it's just hard to say goodbye to folks that have been around and provided as much guidance and support and commitment as you have, but I hope you'll find something to do in your spare time when you're not coming to meetings. What do you think?
Absolutely. No problem, brother.
All right. Thank you.
Well, I've heard the county privilege to know each one of you, and I want to thank you for that fellowship we've had all across the mountains here. My background goes back, you know, I spent twenty years in Raleigh, so I know the crowd down there, I know the crowd up here. I was... Different crowd. Different crowd, but do the same thing, same type of people. But anyway, I was a guy that started to merge the things, and that's sort of the name of the game here. We looked around and we made some presentations to the New River Group. One of our philosophers that time was not to try to force anybody to join Smokey. We wanted the people to join us because they thought it was the right thing to do. And that was our way of approaching it. So during my tenure, we brought in the New River Group, and that group, back in that day, we used to have board meetings all over those mountains up there, so we went through that. And then later on, we did a presentation of Foothills and brought in Foothills, and that's another good group that we continue to span. And I've stayed long enough now, we've grown in western Highlands, so I've seen the three groups, and I've read in the paper and saw Brian's article in the last few days. Looks like there'll be two more MCOs coming in, so I guess I'll miss that merger, but anyway, I think we're on the right track. The other thing, and I try to just stay in touch with the powers that be in Raleigh. Right now, it's just with the cook at Crumble, our man that's on the DHR board, Dave Richards, a friend of mine, his wife's one of my best friends, and I was able to introduce her to Brian at one of her meetings, I believe in Raleigh or someplace. So, anyway, I think we're on the right track. I'm strictly very pleased with Brian and his leadership as we move forward, and I do want to see Smokey Mountain be one of the leaders in the state as this merger gets wrapped up in the next year or so. I think that's what we'll do. But it's been a real privilege to know each one of you, and I've met a lot of friends all over the state that I didn't know, and I got to visit your regions back from those meetings, and go into the region. So, I want to thank you for your hospitality and fellowship throughout the state. And I wish each one of you well, and yes, it's time. I went on the board, I believe, in two thousand and two. In fact, from a county commissioner standpoint, I was chair of Haywood County. I decided when I reorganized my board, I put myself on the Smokey Mountain board. So, I'd been on the county fair board and some other things, and I thought, well, I know a little about social services and those sorts of things, mental health, have run the state institutions for about twenty-five, twenty years, I knew how that worked. So, I wanted to continue something that I knew something about, and it's been a real privilege. And I want to thank Brian, you and your leadership, and the people we've got employed as well. Thank each one of you, and I wish you well in the days to come, and I wish our new board well, and all of our administration to move forward. Thank you so much.
I did not know Bill Nolan, but we had a mutual friend. I did not know Bill Nolan, but we had a mutual friend. I was elected in 2006. Kept, and after many years, kept close contact, even before he was our county manager in Macon County, with Jack Horton, recently retired, our county manager. He and Bill Nolan were close friends. So, I did ask Jack before I took this appointment to the Smokey Mountain Board, he said, "Don't you worry about a thing Bill Nolan's are." He said, "What? You'll find that Bill Nolan is somebody that's consistent, that, uh, that'll, that'll play you right and will, and will never lead you wrong, and, and can keep a calm nature when everything else is falling all to hell." And that has all been true with Bill Nolan. So, I appreciate it, Bill, and our mutual friend sends his congratulations and thanks for all you've done, not only for this board, but what you've done for this region over the years.
Thanks so much.[651.41][651.41](APPLAUSE)
Bill, I couldn't pass up this opportunity to tell you how much I appreciate your friendship from 2007 to the present time, and I hope it'll continue on. But as Ronnie says, you're a, you're a knowledgeable person. You're a person that you can go to. You're a stand-up person. You've got answers. You know where to go. You're just a, a fine friend and a fine, great asset to this board and have been over the years. And I'm sorry to see you go. You're a stand-up person. Thank you for your friendship.
Thanks so much.[692.04][692.04](APPLAUSE)
The next member we'd like to recognize tonight is Kenneth Sutter from Avery County. Kenneth, we appreciate your service to the Smokey Mountain Board.
Thank you. He left his skin there outside the door.[716.12][716.12](LAUGHTER)
And Brian, you want to read the plaque? He's probably never heard this before, so...
I know. This is very inspiring here. It says, "Smokey Mountain Center presented to Kenneth Sutter in deep appreciation for your individual talents and concern dedication so generously given to the citizens of our communities. Boarded Director of Smokey Mountain Center, January 2014." Not bad, huh?
Not much.
Appreciate you. Uh, I don't know if this is what you signed up for, but, you know, this has been a whirlwind tour, I'm sure, for you. And, uh, you know, been very committed, and, uh, I know we've even had discussions with you to explain situations with providers. I know you're very committed to your community and, and the folks that, uh, that are present there, and, and I'm sure you'll continue to be, even though you're not a board member, you know, you, you're still a friend and hopefully a diplomat here of Smokey.
One thing I do want to say is be, be careful who your friends are, because it can get you in trouble sometimes. I just happen to be classmates with two particular county commissioners of our county, Mr. Johnson being one of them, and, uh, Mr. Petit, our chairman, the other. And they came to me and asked me if I would serve. And, uh, I thought about it a little bit and decided that I would. And it, it has been a pleasure to serve on this board. I've served on several boards through the years, and I can say this, uh, the staff here has been great to work with, and I do want to, to say that. They have really, uh, like Brian said, we had an issue or two. When you get on a board from a small county, people find out and start complaining. And, uh, I got a couple of calls, and, and I called Brian, and it was taken care of. I think the people were very satisfied with the way things worked out. And, and I appreciate what you did there, Brian. You helped, and, you know, that's what it's all about. It's good PR, I think, and that's what I've tried to do. And, and, you know, it's, it's been a pleasure. I really want to, uh, to wish the new board the best. I know it's gonna be a big job. Uh, and, and I really want to wish you the best. And anything we can do, I can do from Avery County. Feel free to, uh, to ask, and I'll do my best to serve. If I get on something, I try and do it the best I can. And I try to attend all the meetings, and I try to do what I can. And it, it's been a pleasure. Thank you, Brian.
Well, Kenny, uh, I know him as Kenny. I've known him for about 60 years. And, uh, you know, you never know when you've known someone for 60 years, when they get hold of a microphone, what they might say about you. But he stole just a little bit of my thunder. But, uh, the reason the board appointed Kenny was we, we did know about that commitment. And, uh, we, we also knew that he had some mental health, uh, experience there, uh, working with probation for all the years that, all the years that he did. And of course, mental health, we all know, mental health is very much part of probation and parole and so on and so forth. But certainly, uh, it was a unanimous decision to, to appoint Kenny to this board, and I think it was, was a good, a very good decision. And thank you.
One more thing, Brian.
I just have one more thing with Glenn said there. I did work, uh, for years in the juvenile field, and I worked with New River Mental Health for years, back when New River Mental Health was a good organization. And, you know, uh, it was a pleasure then. We had some good people there. And, uh, you know, after I retired, it seemed like things didn't go so well. So, I don't know. But anyway, I just want to let you know that I did work with New River Mental Health for years, and there were a lot of good people there, put a lot of good time in. And when Glenn said that, I thought I better mention that.
The next member we'd like to recognize is Bill Upton from Haywood County. Bill, we appreciate your service to the Smokey Board. I believe, Bill, you're the retired, aren't you retired school superintendent from...
Haywood.
From Haywood? Yes, okay. And I have, I think there's some people here that want to say a few things either about you or for you, so, um... Ronnie, you want to add some few words?
Bill Upton, uh, is from Haywood County. And that's all right. But Bill came on the board, and during that time, we've had some long discussions about the mental health and what it means. But this is another one of those people we talked about who has a heart for people that he represents as a county commissioner. And as a school, uh, person, and been in the school system for this many years, you talk to anyone in Haywood County, and I believe Bill will vouch for this, uh, the character of Bill Upton and what he meant to the school system of Haywood County, Whitey Nellam, Angels County Commissioner. It's a pleasure to know him. He does know Gary Shields. I don't know how much that hurts him. But, uh, me and you don't talk that much, Bill. And, uh, so, uh, but it's a pleasure to serve with, with Bill, and he's another of those that says very little. But when you get to talking to him, uh, he knows a whole lot more than you think. So, Bill, it's a pleasure to serve with you on any board. Thank you.
Well, Bill, one thing I can say is we always look up to you. Right? And I would think after knocking heads in a school system for as many years as you did, I, I don't know how you ended up here, but, you know, it's been to our, our benefit. We had some challenges there with your county that you were a great help with, and, you know, we'll never forget that, and you'll just appreciate how much you've done for us here. Thank you.
Thank you.[1104.83][1104.83](APPLAUSE)
Yeah, it's, it's tough, uh, getting up before your peers, you know? Research indicates man's greatest fear is speaking publicly. You know, you would think death would be, but, uh, it's been my pleasure to work with a diverse group that has one thing in common: you care about people. You know, people don't care what you know until they know you care. So, no matter what the makeup of this board becomes, as long as we get people in here that care about people and want to do something, and that's the main thing, do, uh, do something about it, uh, we can make a difference. Now, we had a rough time in Haywood, uh, about two years ago. My other four members and I kind of disagreed on how much support we needed to give Smokey Mountain. I did some phone calling, I did some talking, and I believe we're getting our money now, so that's the main thing. So, uh, we need to continue all the services we can give to those, uh, people, our constituents, no matter where we find them. To me, we will have a growing problem, because, you know, our population is increasing. We gonna need more services for those people out there. Also, uh, let alone sideline here, we've always had great meals, no matter what, hotel or motel, great meals. And at one time, you know, I was about 290, uh, so I, I ate too much, but when I had my heart, my bypass surgery 2008, by the time I came on this board, doc said I had to do something. And one of those things was quitting. I also found out that, uh, there's a job out there. You know, I was sitting there for eight years, but I found there's a job out there that you can select your own board and set your own salary. So, that's kind of the job that I'm looking forward to, so, and I'm not gonna mention any names.[1245.25][1245.25](LAUGHTER) Again, thank you and the administration. I can say one thing: you'll get an email. And if you haven't read it, you'll get another email. So, uh, you know, the best surprise is a no, no surprise. But Brian, we appreciate that, getting the information out until we finally read it. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. Wow. This next person needs no introduction, but, um, it's hard to know what to say exactly for, for Dorothy Crawford. Dot's been, uh, the note say, the last founding board member, and, um, you've been my idol, Dot, for so long. I really, really appreciate you and all your wisdom that you bring to this board. Um, you know, there's a lot of experience on this board. I believe you came on the board in 1997?
1972.
72, okay.[1307.12][1307.12](LAUGHTER)
Before some of you were born.[1310.33][1310.33](LAUGHTER)
And, uh, we really, really appreciate you being on our board and serving with us more than you know. It's an honor. It really is an honor. And at this time, if you'll step forward, there's a number of people who want to say stuff. Imagine that. Brian?
Oh, boy.
You're gonna make me cry.
Well, just cry.[1336.33][1336.33](LAUGHTER) See, when I, when I came on, I knew all the county commissioners in those seven western counties and got them together to start something.
Mm-hmm. Well, you sure started something, Doris. That's all I got to say. It's, and it's not over yet.
Nope, nope. It won't be over.
Boy, you have been a part of, of something that I hope has been very fulfilling for you. I, I, the respect, the admiration, the, uh, just full appreciation for you as a person that I have and other people have. I, I don't know how to express it anymore. Um, you know, there's not many Dorothy Crawfords in the world, and, and we've been so blessed to have you be part of this organization for as long as you have. And whether you're on the board or not, you're still part of us, as far as I'm concerned.
I will be, because to people, all of the ones that we are supposed to be here to serve, until they're served. And you keep on keeping on. I know Judge Stone was mentioned tonight. Someone, uh, he called, uh, one of his, uh, workers called me, and she says, "My son is being released from the hospital. He's no more ready to be released than anything." And she says, "I'm dying with cancer, and I can't take care of it." I said, "Call Judge Stone." She says, "Will he do any good?" I said, "Yes," and I called the hospital, that was Burlington. And I said, "He will call, and I will call, and we'll see what we can do." The man was more ready to leave the hospital than, uh, Bill over there was ready to go into the hospital.[1455.87][1455.87](LAUGHTER) He was transferred to the medical hospital down there, was that bank. So, we have to keep on keeping on regardless. But let us always know that it's not us, but who we're supposed to be serving, 'cause it may be us someday.
Amen.
Ms. Dorothy, since you come on the, I come on this board in 2007, end of 2007, uh, I got active fairly quickly in the North Carolina Council, which I currently serve as their chair. But Dorothy and I have been to a lot, and John, have been to a lot of meetings. We have a spring forum and we have a fall forum. And, uh, everybody there knows this woman. Everybody, they're from all over the state. They know her. They know her by her first name. They know where she's been, what she did, how long she's done this, that. I've never seen anybody quite like you in this particular business of mental health and knowing what is going on in mental health.
Well, see, I was in social service.
Well...
And social service had to be mental health back then.[1547.12][1547.12](LAUGHTER)
But anyway, I just want to tell you, it's been such a pleasure working with you, having you on this board. When I was chair here, you were active and working and informative. You always knew what to do, where to do, who to see, or you had a great list of names. And really, I just found it such a blessing to have known you, uh, as a member of this board. But I hope to continue having you as our friend for a long, long time. Thank you.
You will. If, if you do your part, you're gonna have me.[1578.12][1578.12](LAUGHTER)[1579.12][1579.12](APPLAUSE) And he gets the credit.
Yeah. This is a two-for-one deal.
Yeah.
First of all, let me introduce to you, uh, as of last night, the Citizens of the Year of Macon County for 2013 and 14, John and Dorothy Crawford.[1607.75][1607.75](APPLAUSE) I would talk about it. I would, now.
But he also would be the Duke Citizen of the Year because the chamber does it for Duke of what he has done.
I appreciate that.[1628.12][1628.12](APPLAUSE) I really thought only thing I'd ever give from Duke's a power bill, 'cause I spoke against these rate hikes so bad, but, uh... John and Dorothy Crawford, uh, not known them long, just for 53 years. John Crawford, uh, you never heard this story. When I was five years old, this was our mailman.
Did he?
Have I told that? For 53 years, this man has handed me a piece of candy every time I saw him. And I saw him a lot.[1662.25][1662.25](LAUGHTER) Ms. Dot Crawford, before I was ever county commissioner, and I was involved in some things, uh, Governor Hunt, I think, appointed me to the Social Services Board. Jane Kimsey, Dot had retired or semi-retired at that time after 40, how many? Lots, uh, from the Social Services Director. So, I called Ms. Dorothy and said, "I've, you know, come by, son. I'd like to talk to you." So, we did that. And since that time, uh, not only have both of these people, uh, you're nothing but two people you don't, that this is a World War II highly decorated person standing to my right. On my left is a Social Services Director that if you're involved in social services in North Carolina today, literally, literally, the things that this lady put in place are part of the Social Services Directory that you have today in North Carolina. That, I don't know anybody else that's done that, but we're proud, so proud, I'm proud as a, as an individual, not only serve on this board, but, you know, me and Dorothy gets involved in lots of stuff. And, uh, but to know John and Dorothy Crawford, what they meant to our community in Macon County is irreplaceable. We, uh, we've tried to honor them any way we can with the Senior Services Center and, and many other things, but, uh, sometimes we, we piddle around and we wait too long to recognize those who've had an effect on our lives. They, and both of them has had an effect on this board and on the mental health services. They send it come and go and, and down to the bottom, and hope we're on the swing, on the upswing now. So, I cannot say enough, this board, these people around this room, Dorothy and John, cannot say enough of thank yous for what you've done and just the individuals they've reached out to. I know some of these folks. I go to the ER with Doc Crawford, well, said... I go to the ER, but Dot Crawford, well, this is another thing, by the way, she'll tell them to call Ronnie Beal. But these are two folks, these are two, those are two jewels for any community, for this board, for this region, and a plaque is nice, but a plaque is not worthy for these two people. I'll tell you that right now. And I can't express how much I personally appreciate, and I'm speaking on behalf of all Maconians when I say that, Dorothy, you know it's true. And so with that, these flowers were for me, but it's not my color. This is another little bouquet of flowers, Dorothy, that, for you and John.
Thank you.
To go home with, and we appreciate them very much. If a standing ovation is ever gonna be in order here, that would be right now. Thank you.
We wanted to serve the folks, and it could not been, we could not have done it without them. And social service in those days, Bill, is like you said, when you were there, we had Dr. Winston, and when she called and asked you to do something, you knew you had to do it anyway, but it helped us get services through the commissioners that some of the counties wouldn't do, that we did, that are accredited to the counties today.
And across the state.
Yeah, and across the state now.
John Crawford is gonna say something, I want to go.
I appreciate you very, very much, and I've enjoyed being around. And I'm 94 years old.
You had a birthday.
I'm 95. I was born in a low cabin up in the mountains, and Dr. delivered me rolling a horse out. And I've lived in Macon County all my time, except being a pilot in World War II. And when the war was over with, I loved being a pilot, but I wanted to live with good people in the mountains, so I quit and come home. At the end of the war, I was making $460, $4 a month, and when I come home, made $160. And don't regret it, living with good people makes a difference. And thank you very much for everything you've done for me.
One thing that you need to know about Smokey, our first director was Ben Munro. And Ben had a psychic that all of his family died with heart attacks young, and he kept that, and he did too. But he and Dr. Amelia Khan and I were coming back from Cherokee County, we'd been over there to meet him, that just hired a psychiatrist. But the psychiatrist had been there about a month, and they had to fire him. And I said, "Why didn't y'all do a good background check?" Well, you know this personnel, people can't tell some things. They found out that he was an alcoholic and had really lost two weekends, and that's when they fired him. So, be sure you do your personnel, that you won't be.
No surprise.
But thank y'all, thank y'all, thank y'all. I've enjoyed every minute on the board, most of the time, sometimes it was not so hot. But advocacy has to continue, and I will be an advocate for mental health as long as I'm, have got it up here.
Why don't you get a little puzzler, so you get a good picture. Maybe booting something, Jerry, or what?
What? Let me get my light on here.
Let's all get together, we don't want to give any big gaps. That's right.
That's already five pictures out there.
It's already done. so much history. We appreciate you, every one of you, but there were people that were not here tonight, and I want to mention their names. Greg Cable from Graham County. Phil Carson from Swain County. Judy Davis from Ash County. Mike Edwards from Graham County. Keith Elmore from Wilkes County. Kevin King, Kevin was here earlier, but had to go back for another meeting. Mike LaBrosse from Colwell County. Fred Oliver from Watauga County. Janice Patterson from Clay County. Darrell Robertson from Alexander County. I believe that's, I believe that's everyone. Is there anyone I left out?
Tommy McClure.
Tommy McClure. That's 20, that's 21 members, that's a lot of experience, and we sincerely appreciate everyone. We had nine of the 21 people here tonight. We'll have to get the plaques to them, but again, we appreciate that. One thing I want to remind everyone of before we adjourn is that we still have some Christmas gifts from last meeting that are on the table back there. If you weren't here last meeting and didn't get a Christmas gift, make sure you get it. Or if you want to take one of those in need, as well spoken by Jill, so.
We don't want that team to have anything left on it.
That's right. So, everybody hear that. Does anybody else have anything they want to say before we adjourn?
I have a question, actually, Ray, I have two questions, and I think probably either Brian or my friend Ronnie Beal down there might, might answer these questions. I know at the last meeting, I asked this question, "How many counties have not voted upon the reconstituted board?" And the second part of that question is, "Has Secretary Voss ever signed those documents concerning the reconstituted board?" I know we were told that when and if she did, that we would receive that communication, and I, as of now, have not received that, that she has signed that. The second question is, and y'all can answer both at the same time, but with the new mergers coming on, we will exceed, we will meet and, I think, exceed the 1.2 million catchment area. When we do that, what happens then with the, with the board makeup? And while I'm there, the reason I mentioned Ronnie there, we appreciate Ronnie's advocacy in Raleigh. Ronnie doesn't mind speaking up and asking the proper questions and, and creating some waves when he needs to, and I heard him say that he was going to continue to, is that correct, Ronnie, he's gonna continue to, to advocate for the county commission board members?
We'll be having a meeting tomorrow, and I'm going to Raleigh for you. We will be meeting with the representatives we didn't meet with in last fight, too. You heard Bill, no one called Dave Richards' name. He's the Director of Mental Health Services, and a good man. So, we'll be meeting with those folks, and a lot of us felt like, when you're elected to serve the people, that you should be elected to see what services they get, and you put money into the institution, how that is intended. Our county never voted for the governance issue. Several far west counties never voted for the, for the governance issue. But neither here nor there, we're gonna move on, we have to now, and we'll continue to do so. We hope that this raging and Smokey, however it ends up, but here at Greensboro, pretty good hump. It's, it's a lot of folks, and it's a lot of responsibility, and they constitute the new board and those new members. We'll find out real quick. But for those who still think the governance issue is dead, it probably is, but we will be constantly reminded of those governance issues, that elected officials are the ones on the front lines for the people. When there's, if something goes wrong at home with mental health, they usually don't call Appalachia, they call me. They call the county commissioner. Something blows up, it don't come to Smokey, it comes to county, county board, any county committee or senate, you're gonna be able to tell you that. So, that's the reason I think that, that the county should have representation, but that's another subject. But I look forward, as we move on, what this board has accomplished, if you look back, you know, from the hiring of Ryan Ingram, everything else this board's been through, it's pretty amazing what this board's accomplished. It really is. And took a lot of good folks, a lot of them good folks is around this table, some of has dropped off, and not here tonight, but, but all in all, we look forward as we move on, because it's about those people, it's about those three that's in the ER in Macon County. Right now, it'll probably be there for 42 to 46 hours. We just gotta, we'll be presenting this tomorrow, Macon County has spent today $286,000 in ER here, in transportation, that is five full-time law enforcement officers. So, we'll reminder to those things and continue to do so. All of our managers are in the same boat, this money's getting tighter, it comes down to those people who need services, and that's why we're here, so. Just again, thanks, all this board and the previous members, down 50 years, as Dot said, 1972, that's been pretty good. Thank y'all.
But anyway, I'm seeing you shake your head, that Secretary Voss did sign that?
Yeah.
When, what's the date?
Well, let me, let me answer you a couple of questions here. I don't have the latest list. I know Jill was keeping that up as, as we were getting information.
14 have approved.
Okay, 14 have approved, and I couldn't tell you who has or hasn't, but we have that list somewhere.
So, nine have not?
Apparently, apparently. And, you know, this was very confusing, so let me just remind people again, back in October, we submitted our consolidation or merger agreement that was voted on by both the Western Board and the Smokey Board. Subsequent to that, there were some questions about the way we had worded things, and this and that, and the other thing, there was a, actually, I filed an affidavit that was supposed to get things straightened out, and that didn't, and then finally, we determined that a further amendment to that consolidation agreement was what was gonna make everybody satisfied. So, we put that together, that's what I referenced earlier, we had a vote about that amendment, we were unanimous on the Smokey side, we talked about Western, they unanimously supported that this morning. So, let me read to you the letter, and this was the letter we got December 19th, and it's addressed to both myself and Charlie Shunheit. DHHS approval of Western Highlands Network LME dissolution, and, there's two actions, merger with Smokey Mountain Center LME. Dear Mr. Ingram, Mr. Shunheit, pursuant to the authority granted by North Carolina General Statute 122(c)(115)(3(b), upon the execution of the attached amendment to the consolidation agreement of September 26, 2013, I approve the dissolution of the Western Highlands LME and its merger with Smokey. All other conditions as previously provided, together with any statutory requirements for dissolution and for the merger, continue to apply. So, she sent the letter, it was contingent upon that amendment being adopted by both boards, that was finally completed today by Western, so it's, it's done.
So, we know we have 30 days to, for county commission boards to vote on this thing after the secretary signed the documents.
Not, not exactly, I mean, the, the way, there was some friendly legislation given by Senator Heitz that allows us 30 days from the time of the, I forget what the language is exactly, it essentially boiled down to being the approval of the secretary. I think that's the final act in the, in the consolidation. So, 30 days from the day of that consolidation, the new board had to be constituted that's consistent with the legislation, that everybody else had to abide by beginning October 1st. So, we got a pass. So, 30 days from today is when that new board has to be constituted.
That, that's correct, that, the legislation essentially said, you know, from the date that that merger becomes effective, you have 30 days. It doesn't mean you can't do it sooner than 30 days, but 30 days is the maximum amount of time that you have to get that new board up and running.
Okay, but I think I'm understanding what you're saying here. You said there was 14 counties so far that voted yea or nay on the reconstituted board, county commission boards?
Yes.
They voted yes.
14 have voted yes?
Yes.
Correct.
Many have voted no?
Two.
Two, okay, that's consistent with what was said last night, there's seven counties that are not voted at all. I'm assuming, I'm assuming, at least that's the way it is with Avery County, I'm assuming that these, Avery County and these other six may be waiting upon that 30 days for it to start running before they vote on it. It's not, as Ronnie said, it's not gonna make a difference whether you vote on it or whether you don't, but, so you're saying that that 30 days starts to run today, correct?
Yeah, and that, that's not, really, I understand you're tying that to the county commissioners voting, but that's not what the 30 days is, and the 30 days is to have the board in place.
Yeah, okay, well, I'm, you know, maybe I'm, maybe I misunderstood, and I don't want to beat that horse to death here, but, you know, we, we need to move on. But I'm concerned here that, we were originally told, I originally thought, that the 30 days started to run from the day the secretary signed this thing. And you had, those county commission boards had 30 days after that to sign, to, to vote on this reconstituted board? That's not correct? Okay.
All right. The county commissioner boards started taking action, I think the first one was probably back in, what, November, probably?
Yeah.
The first one that came in?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, there's nothing in the law about, about when they have to do that exactly, and this was just a very, it was very typical, we're the only ones.
One line is, there's seven counties that haven't voted yea or nay.
That's, as far as we know, correct.
Okay.
Okay, is, is there any other business?
Move to adjourn.
Okay, Billy Kenny made a motion to adjourn, Judy Poe second, all in favor of adjourn, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, and we have dinner outside, so please stay and eat.